We're going to start momentarily. Mr. Fenders, if you can, take some practice session on Zoom. Dr. Moreling, we are.
All right. This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. The webinar ID for this meeting is 867-4230-8498, and the required password is 811450. All right. Call this meeting to order. Roll call, please. Mr. Plaker.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
I think he was. Check number.
Excuse me. Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Here.
Ms. Jansen. Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Ms. Dabnera.
Here.
Mr. De Silva. And Dr. Moreling.
Here.
And Super Representative Max Ingerman.
Here.
Adequate notice of agenda. This meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Records specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on March 6, 2024, in the administrative offices 6D Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. Copy was filed with the township clerk. Our salute to the flag. Mr. Gallo, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do you need a motion to recess to executive session? We will have that in the beginning. Mr. Hughes, and second by Mr. Kizmarski. All right. So we will be about 10 to 15 minutes. Thank you. All right. And we move on to our Mawa student representative report. Max.
So I'm here with a lot of information. It's been a busy, busy career week. So right now, we have the Drama Club is putting on their show, L.A. Miz. Tonight is for the senior citizens, and Thursday, Friday, Saturday are for the public at 7:00 PM, and Sunday is at 2:00 PM. And this is all under the direction of Mr. Naum. We have our club deck at the state competition in Atlantic City. They took 35 of our Mawa high school, took Mawa high school's finest business personnel to represent their high school, and they are led by Mr. Torino and Mrs. Ferguson. The Mawa Model U.N. Club had a competition today. They are led by Mr. Miller. Winter sports came to an end on Wednesday, as all of our winter sports seemed to have a very, very successful season. We want to congratulate all of our winter athletes. Our spring season is coming next Thursday, March 14. Our club is having a new exposition up in the T3 gallery, which is in the big blue square. The theme is fantasy, as Mawa's most talented artist, as they're led by Mr. Natum and Mrs. Brown. And she is also our top thorn thunderbird of March. FCA and Action Through FBLAX are hosting a 3v3 basketball tournament on Friday after school. It is a $15 entry fee, and all of it will be going to the Marcus Cale Fund. So far, we have 20 teams and have raised $300. Next Monday, honor AP art students are going to the Metropolitan Museum of Art. Two students exhibited their animation at Rampeau College at Animation Fest last week. And on March 25th, the flyer we have here, the Gems is hosting a steam night for all of the students in the Ridge from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Winter Guard Indoor Percussion are working towards their shows for the championship. Right now, the high school is in mind for March. We have a whole bunch of activities planned, from our SEL coaches, Coach Yak and Coach Graff, and from the Hope Club. At the high school, there was a career pathway at the Ridge, and eight of our high schools, who are eight high school students who are on different career pathways, went down to the Ridge to talk about it. And on Friday, Mr. Calvis has taken some of his students to NJIT to participate in the 3D printing bridge contest. And that's all from me.
Thank you, Max.
Great. Thank you very much, Max.
Thank you.
And you're welcome to stay if you'd be interested.
I'm out.
All right. Dr. Chatura, your report for this evening.
Yes, thank you. Max took a bunch of my things, so there's still a lot left. In our continued commitment to celebrate our athletes and our students, there are a number of things. Max spoke about the success of our winter sports, and I wanted to take a minute to talk about all of our award winners. To start, the awards span from team awards, individual awards, and coaches' awards. So we had our girls bowling team was third with the Patriot Division Champions. Our girls basketball team, Patriot Division Champions. Senior Sienna Canenberg, State Sectional Champion and Patriot Division Champion in 400-meter race. Senior Kalia Nichols, Patriot Division Champion in shot put. Senior Joseph Barello, Patriot Division Champion in 55-meter hurdles. We had two coaches of the year, which is wonderful. Talks about how great our coaches are. Coach James Delesio, Patriot Division Girls Bowling Coach of the Year. And our brand-new coach, Coach Karen Roche, Patriot Division Girls Basketball Coach of the Year. We have some individual awards. Get comfortable. We have all county. Marissa LaBregueta, first team, girls basketball. Ava Novello, second team, all county wrestling. Harper Cohen, freshman, third team, all county, girls basketball. Lindsay Cunningham, again, freshman, third team, all county wrestling. Taylor Tremblay, honorable mention, girls basketball. Ryan Laura, honorable mention, boys bowling. That's for all counties. For all league, these are all first-team, all-league award winners. Brian Apia, bowling. Ryan Laura, bowling. Peyton Egg, swimming. Alexander Wong, swimming. Lucian Lee, swimming. Zachary O'Connor, swimming. Harper Cohen, basketball. Marissa LaBregueta, basketball. Taylor Tremblay, basketball. Mackenzie Faez, bowling. Emily Hung, bowling. Kaylee Hung, bowling. That's first team. Second team, Ryan Matthews, basketball. Tyson Van Pelt, basketball. Cooper Milne, bowling. Peyton Egg, swimming. Alexander Wong, swimming. Lucian Lee, swimming. Zachary O'Connor, swimming. Allison Bowe, bowling. Molly Fear, swimming. Cole Aruda, wrestling. Then we have honorable mention. Charlie Saridi, basketball. Anthony Lalonde, bowling. Pierre Naman, swimming. Emma Jordan, basketball. Isabella Moffett, basketball. Kelly O'Malley, bowling. Elizabeth Mizees, swimming. Alexander Chrissy, wrestling. And Zachary Sagato, wrestling. So I just wanted to take a minute.
All right, and we're back. I need a motion to reconvene to public action meeting. Mr. Gallo and second by Mr. Denise. All right, agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions and under business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. I need a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. Kismarski and second by Mr. Hughes. We are officially open to the public. Seeing no one coming forward at this time, motion to close the meeting to the public. I need a motion. Mr. Hughes, second by Mr. Copeland. Thank you. All right, and we move on to our Mawa student representative report. Max?
So, I'm here with a lot of information. It's been a busy, busy week. So, right now we have the Drama Club is putting on their show, L.A. Miz. Tonight is for the senior citizens and Thursday, Friday, Saturday are for the public at seven P.M. and Sunday is at two P.M. And this is all under the direction of Mr. Naum. We have our club, Decca, at the state competition in Atlantic City. They took thirty-five our Mawa High School, from, took Mawa High School's finest business personnel to represent their high school. And they are led by Mr. Torino and Mrs. Ferguson. The Mawa Model U.N. Club had a competition today. They are led by Mr. Miller. Winter sports came to an end on Wednesday as all of our winter sports seemed to have a very, very successful season. We want to congratulate all of our winter athletes. Our spring season is coming next Thursday, March fourteen. Our club is having a new exposition up in the T3 gallery, which is in the big Blue Square. The theme is fantasy, as one of the, as Mawa's most talented artists, as they're led by Mr. Natum and Mrs. Brown. And she is also our top thorn Thunderbird of March. FCA and Action Through F. Black are hosting a three-on-three basketball tournament on Friday after school. It is a fifteen-dollar entry fee and all of it will be going to the Marcus Cale Fund. So far, we have twenty teams and have raised three hundred dollars. Next Monday, honor AP art students are going to the Metropolitan Museum of Art. Two students exhibited their animation at Rampeau College at Animation Fest, well, last week. And on March twenty-fifth, the flyer we have here, the Gems is hosting a steam night for all of the students in the Ridge from six to eight P.M. Winter Guard Indoor Percussion are working towards their shows for the championship. Right now, the high school is in mind for March. We have a whole bunch of activities planned, from our SEL coaches, Coach Yak and Coach Graff, and from the Hope Club. At the high school, there was a career pathway at the Ridge and eight, eight of our high schools, who are, eight high school students who are on the different career pathways, went down to the Ridge to talk about it. And on Friday, Mr. Calvin has taken some of, some of his students to NJIT to participate in the three-D printing bridge contest. And that's all from me.
Thank you, Max.
Great. Thank you very much, Max.
Thank you.
And you're welcome to stay if you'd be interested. All right. Dr. Chitura, your report for this evening.
Yes, thank you. Max took a bunch of my things, so there's still a lot left. In our continued commitment to celebrate our athletes and our students, there are a number of things. Max spoke about the success of our winter sports, and I wanted to take a minute to talk about all of our award winners. To start, the awards span from team awards, individual awards, and coaches' awards. So, we had our girls' bowling team was third with the Patriot Division Champions, our girls' basketball team, Patriot Division Champions, senior Sienna Canenberg, State Sectional Champion and Patriot Division Champion in four-hundred-meter race, senior Kalia Nichols, Patriot Division Champion in shot put, senior Joseph Barello, Patriot Division Champion in fifty-five-meter hurdles. We had two coaches' of the year, which is wonderful, talks about how great our coaches are, Coach James Delesio, Patriot Division Girls Bowling Coach of the Year, and our brand-new coach, Coach Karen Roche, Patriot Division Girls Basketball Coach of the Year. We have some individual awards. Get comfortable. We have all-county Marissa LaBregada, first-team girls' basketball, Ava Novello, second-team all-county wrestling, Harper Cohen, freshman, third-team all-county girls' basketball, Lindsay Cunningham, again, freshman, third-team all-county wrestling, Taylor Tremblay, honorable mention, girls' basketball, Ryan Laura, honorable mention, boys' bowling. That's for all counties. For all-league, these are all first-team all-league award winners. Brian Apia, bowling. Ryan Laura, bowling. Peyton Egg, swimming. Alexander Wong, swimming. Lucian Lee, swimming. Zachary O'Connor, swimming. Harper Cohen, basketball. Marissa LaBregada, basketball. Taylor Tremblay, basketball. Mackenzie Faez, bowling. Emily Hung, bowling. Kaylee Hung, bowling. That's first-team. Second-team, Ryan Matthews, basketball. Tyson Van Pelt, basketball. Cooper Milne, bowling. Peyton Egg, swimming. Alexander Wong, swimming. Lucian Lee, swimming. Zachary O'Connell, swimming. Olivia Centrelli, basketball. Eva Comer, basketball. Allison Bow, bowling. Molly Fear, swimming. Cole Peruta, wrestling. Then we have honorable mention, Charlie Saridi, basketball. Anthony Lalonde, bowling. Pierre Naman, swimming. Emma Jordan, basketball. Isabella Moffett, basketball. Kelly O'Malley, bowling. Elizabeth Mizees, swimming. Alexander Chrissy, wrestling. And Zachary Sagato, wrestling. So, I just wanted to take a minute and congratulate the great seasons that they had, the teams that they had, and the great coaches that we had. So, thank you so much for the adults, the dedication of the athletes, and most importantly, as a parent of an athlete, I want to thank the parents for their ongoing commitment to us and making sure that the kids are coming and going and coming out and supporting. I was just at the state championship game last week, and it was a great crowd for the girls' basketball team, and Mawa really showed out. So, it was against Glen Rock, and I was cheering for Mawa. But I have to say, I had a number of Glen Rock families come up and talk about the incredible energy that the Mawa fans had. And most importantly, which I was really proud of, is the class of the fans. And they were cheering very loud, but they were very classy in the way in which they were supporting their team. So, that means a lot to me. So, I just want to say thank you to all of them. Something that I missed last meeting, and it's something that you cannot miss, is I wanted to thank a donation made by our, our music, our high school music boosters. This is a long time coming. We've been talking about this for a while. There's been a donation of a UTV 2023 Kawasaki Mule SX four-by-four XCFI twenty, and then, and also a 2022 Triton ATV eighty-eight trailer. All of that means, all of the equipment that our band needs to transport from trailer to spot, a number of districts have this, this vehicle and trailer to assist in that transport. It's been a long time coming. We have not had that. So, the music boosters were very generous, and they donated that to us. So, I can't thank the boosters enough for their ongoing commitment to our, to our district, the efforts that they make in raising money. We are extremely grateful, and the band is definitely a point of pride for us, and it's what they give. We greatly, greatly appreciate it. So, we went from athlete to performing arts to now academics. This is our project challenge students. They take part in the law fair competition. And we received this email from the director of mock trial programs from the New Jersey State Art Association. "I'm excited to share congratulations to Ms. Maureen Schaffner and Ms. Kelly DeBello for their exceptional leadership and dedication in guiding our students through the law fair mock trial. Their hard work has undoubtedly contributed to the success and recognition of our students in the fourth and sixth grade. The law competition provides a platform for students and teachers to submit original mock trial cases, fostering an environment that not only promotes legal awareness, but also serves as a valuable educational tool. The cases submitted must be suitable for classroom use to teach students about legal issues, aligning with civics education requirements, such as New Jersey Learning Standard six-point-three-point-eight civics PR-point-five. Under the guidance of Maureen and Kelly, our fourth-grade team placed in second place, and our sixth-grade team placed first, in first place." Now, this was out of seventy-three groups in each division, so it was a huge accomplishment for our teams and our mock trial organization. So, year over year, we have a solid showing. This is an absolutely exceptional showing. So, I wanted to take a moment to thank not only Ms. Schaffner and Ms. DeBello, but I wanted to congratulate the students. I know it's a lot of work preparing for that trial, and then even the presentation of the trial. They go up in front of a judge and present their case. But they are now invited down to Rutgers Law School to present down in New Brunswick. So, that is another point, point of pride. Max talked about the, the high school play. I also wanted to bring, bring your attention to Rampeau Ridge Play. Beauty and a Beast is going to be taking, they're going to perform the week of March twenty-second. And last but not least, sorry. Last but not least, I want to bring everyone's attention to New Business eighteen-H. I wanted to provide some context. You'll see recommendations for Laura Bishop Communication. As a consultant, this communication team will also be able to assist the district in developing, developing and implementing communication strategies as we move forward with a series of initiatives, as informed by our strategic plan, the Mawa Blueprint, and our 2023-2024 district goal focused on community connections, where there is an ongoing effort to develop relationships with the Mawa community and beyond. Mawa Public Schools will continue to develop relationships with the community and business partners. Additionally, it is imperative that our communication is one that is comprehensive, ongoing, and is executed through means that are best suited for our community. Mawa Township Public Schools aims to reinforce its strong presence, accurately reflecting the district's strengths and capturing its vision through all forms of communication. A brand statement will inform key, will inform key messages, which will be woven into a range of tactics and a comprehensive communication plan for our district. Consistent messaging across various channels will help define and build awareness of the district's brand, which will simultaneously bolster the characteristic pride in Mawa Public Schools. A strong brand will benefit the district in subsequent efforts that may include marketing-specific, marketing-specific programs and responding to various issues. Some of the formats that we're looking to engage in would be videos, collateral materials, traditional media, newsletter, newsletters, social media efforts, and a number of things showcasing the awards that we have achieved and we are looking to achieve. Community outreach is also a priority for this engagement. So, I wanted to, to share this with you. I truly think this is an opportunity for us to continue to expand and improve our communication strategy, which, which is something that is important to showcase to our district, the programs that are taking place, the achievements that we have, but also bringing them in to hear from them. So, I, I hope for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Chitura. All right, Mr. Blaker, our preliminary or budget conversation presentation today. All right?
Thank you very much, Mr. Gallo. Thank you for getting that back, please. So, welcome, everybody, for tonight's budget presentation. As I've done in past years, this, tonight is the preliminary budget presentation. So, purpose of tonight is, on the agenda, there is an item to adopt a preliminary budget. This budget, along with support and documentation, will go down to the county office. They will conduct a review over the next several weeks, come back to us with any recommendations or questions that they have regarding it. And in, on our May first board event meeting, we are scheduled to have a adoption of the final budget for next school year, the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So, overview of the itinerary and agenda for this evening, as well as for the next couple of board meetings. Again, as I've done the past years, the budget is far too large to discuss all in one shot, one meeting, so we can break it up over a couple of different meetings. First, nice purposes, I'm going to discuss the revenue sources of the budget, as well as tax impact, speak about debt service and business relationships in the budget, as well as the special revenue area of the budget. For the March twenty-seventh meeting, discuss about special education, tuition, benefits, and other operational areas of the budget. April seventeenth, enrollment, personnel, capital outlay, and proposed summer projects that we have through summer of twenty-four. And May first, a summary of the previous meeting's agendas and discussions, as well as the adoption of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget for the May first meeting. So, chipping reference of revenue that will fund the twenty-four, twenty-five budget for next year. However, there's seven main areas or focuses of revenue. The largest, of course, is the tax levy that is imposed on taxpayers and tissue. That number for next year, for twenty-four, twenty-five, this is inclusive of the tax levy, a waiver, which we'll discuss in a couple of slides, is seventy million, five hundred forty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars. I have debt service reference there as well, however, I'll get into a minute, where there, I wanted to have there's a reference, but there is no debt service tax levy for this school year. This represents an increase of one-point-six-seven percent from the prior year. So, while we're allowed to increase the budget operationally by two percent each year, which we have done, because of other factors in the budget, the overall tax levy is going to be a one-point-six-seven percent increase. Other revenue we have of interest, misincentive revenue, rental income, and reverse misincentive years, and other miscellaneous items. So, that's budget next year for three hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred dollars. It's a little bit larger. We have years past, primarily because of interest and trends in the market impacting our ability to generate interest on our accounts. Again, I'll touch base on that in a few slots. State aid. So, this is the state aid that we receive year over year. It's budgeted next year for four million, seven hundred forty-two thousand, three hundred and sixteen. So, you may have seen in the news lately, as of the last couple of weeks, just last week, Governor Murphy gave his budget address. On that, there are some reports on state aid and impact on districts throughout the state. We were fortunate this year to be recipient of a ten-point-six-four percent increase from the prior year. Fund balance is the next category. So, these are unextended funds from a previous year's budget, as well as other thing, other items that we have that allow us to put money and help fund the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. I've said in the past, and I've said this to the Finance Assilitate Committee as well, this is an area we need to pay close attention to over the next couple of years. And I do want to make efforts to try and lower this number over the next couple of years, really from the perspective of being able to sustain it going forward. Going forward, we are going to have budgets that are more and more lean. We have a two-percent tax levy. Some of our increases, I'll be mentioning them tonight, as well as in future meetings, are over three percent. So, this fund balance does help us balance the budget, but it's something that we do need to be very mindful of and closely watch for the next couple, couple of years, and try and bring that number down responsibly and in a very calculated manner. Next, we have extraordinary aid and semi. So, these are two other areas that help, one from the state government and one from the federal government. Extraordinary aid is something that comes from the state. So, for any special education students who might receive services, such as one-to-one nurses, specialized transportation, specialized placements, that go above and beyond what students might be able to receive. This is based on state guidelines, state thresholds. We can apply to the state for additional aid to help offset the costs of those students. So, this is something that while we're not guaranteed it every year, it is pretty consistently funded. So, we do have a comfort level of funding, a certain level of that for each year. We would apply for it at the end of the school year, then receive it the following school year. And then semi, which is also mentioned here, this is a federal grant that we receive, or federal revenue source that we receive, to once again help with special education students who are also Medicare eligible. Last two items. The first transfers from reserves. So, we have a couple of reserve accounts in the district. We have an emergency reserve, a capital reserve, maintenance reserve. This line indicates that we're going to be transferring some money from those reserves into our, oh, and unemployment reserve, I didn't mention that one, from those reserves into our operating budget for next year. So, from the unemployment reserve, we're going to transfer four hundred thousand dollars. We discussed this, this came about when we discussed our audit with our auditors this past year. We had a pretty detailed, in-depth conversation about the unemployment reserve, how it came to be, what it's made up of, and what we can use it for. We learned that because it receives some funding in prior years, prior budgets of transferred funds from operating into that reserve account, now that it's been more established, it's grown to a, a level that we feel comfortable pulling some money out of that and bringing it back into the operating budget. So, we moved it there from operating several years ago, we're now bringing it back in. In the emergency reserve, while there are various different uses that we can have for it, if we have an extraordinary increase in health benefits, if we have any other emergency situations that might incur in the district, one other area we could use it for is for security needs and upgrades. And speaking with, in building the budget, we do have a need for an upgrade to our overall security mainframe and infrastructure of approximately eighty thousand dollars. So, we're going to fund that next year with a transfer from the emergency reserve account. And then lastly, I'll focus on this towards the end of tonight's presentation, special revenue. These are federal and state grants that we see for specific purposes. This is not part of our operating budget. This is part of a special revenue budget, or Fund Twenty is referred to. These are dedicated for a specific purpose, which again, I'll mention in just a few slides. Finally, this comes to our tax impact slide. As I've said in past years, this gets a, this needs to be re-engineered a little bit, because we are talking about our fiscal budget for next year, which runs from July first to June thirtieth. So, it's on a fiscal year. When we take that and look at it for the tax impact purposes, to share this information with taxpayers and with the tax impact, that is done on the calendar year. So, I'm taking half of this year's tax levy for the twenty-three, twenty-four year, half of next year's tax levy for the twenty-four, twenty-five year. So, also, it comes to the tax impact for the calendar year twenty-twenty-four. Speaking with Mr. Rinaldi, the tax assessor for township. He provided with some of the data for the first two bullet points here. First is net valuation taxable, so this is the overall value of the township. If there's a value for the twenty-twenty-four year of five billion, seven hundred ninety-nine million dollars. It's an increase of a little bit over eight million dollars from the previous year. Again, based on, on information Mr. Rinaldi provided, we have an average value of a home in Mawa for next year, for twenty-twenty-four, of four hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred sixty-nine dollars. It's an increase of seven hundred and seventeen dollars from the prior year. Taking our tax levy from the prior slide and the information here, may occur to the twenty-twenty-four tax impact. So, for every one hundred thousand dollars of value that a home is worth, one thousand, two hundred and six dollars represents, goes to the schools and helps to fund the schools. It's an increase of thirteen dollars and ninety cents from the prior year. And going back to the, above, where we said the average value of a home is four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. For that average home, the tax impact for the schools, compared to Mawa School District, is five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars, an increase of sixty-six dollars and eighty-one cents from the prior year. Couple of highlights and for the twenty-twenty-four year, as I mentioned before, health benefit waiver. So, within the tax levy amount that I mentioned before of seventy million, five forty-eight, included in that, in addition to the two-percent increase that we have on the operating levy from the year before, we are eligible for this year a health benefit waiver, based on thresholds that the state sets and estimates that we have from our professionals that we work with for what the impact might be to health, health benefit for this next year. We do exceed what those thresholds are, and therefore are eligible for a waiver. So, this waiver allows us to exceed and go above the two-percent tax levy. The dollar amount for that waiver is three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Also, something, a highlight for this year, something that we are treating a little bit differently, is what we budget for interest. So, previously, we have been very, very conservative with what we budget for interest. For many years, during COVID years especially, there were extremely low interest rates on our checking accounts and other accounts that we have, savings accounts, CDs, whatnot. However, those trends have changed. We are now, they have increased. We're seeing interest that we can earn on our checking accounts in the four-and-a-half to five-percent range. So, based on that information, and looking at trends where that appears to be stabilizing, and certainly not going down to some of the very low percentages that we had just a couple of years ago, we did feel comfortable increasing what we budget for that to help fund the budget. Interest overall for all of our accounts is a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred dollars that we're budgeting for next year. The reserve transfers, I touched base with this on the other slide, but again, something that we don't necessarily do every year, but we do have some audience this year that can be funded by this. So, we have four hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we're funding the budget from our reserve accounts. And then debt service. Debt service, I wanted to keep this on here, mention it, even though we don't have any debt service scheduled for the twenty-four, twenty-five year, it is something to highlight that we are, this past year, in the twenty-three, twenty-four year, we made our last payment of principal interest that we owed or were responsible for, for any referendums that had been passed previously here in the district. So, this past referendum, I believe this was the one that helped fund the building of Lincoln Medical School. So, our last payment for that was made this past year. With that, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred twenty-four dollars, which is what this year's was, that was the tax levy that was assessed to the townspeople, that now is being taken off. So, that is not going to be assessed at all for next year. So, with the increase of two percent, the increase of the waiver, but with that deduction of not having that debt service and that falling off, that gives us, even though we're above two percent in some areas, the overall tax levy increase for next year is the one-point-six-seven percent that I mentioned on the previous slide. Special revenue. As I had said, I wanted to highlight at least one or two areas for tonight, other than revenue. revenue, and then we'll do more in future presentations. For tonight, I wanted to mention on special revenue, this is also commonly referred to as Fund 20. These are funds that we receive either from federal government, from the State of New Jersey, or from private local sources that are dedicated for a very specific service, purpose, excuse me. This again is outside of our regular operating budget. So from the federal side, we have ESSA, which is formerly called SLV. These are October grants, number one, two, and three, and four, that you may be familiar with, you may have heard. IDEA is another federal funded grant. We use that for the purpose of offsetting the cost of tuition for some special ed students. We have non-public grants. So non-public is exactly what they reference. These are grants that we, the district, hold for some non-public schools in town. So we have Applemont Tassori School, we have Young World Day School, certain funds that the state has allocated for them, however, Mawa is the custodian of. We work closely with those non-public schools to ensure that they are spending them aligned with state guidelines, state purchasing laws. And any funds that they do not use at the end of the year, the non-publics, it does go back to the state at the end. And then lastly, we have local grants. So local grants such as NSF grants, things of that nature are also included in Fund 20. Dollars for next year for the federal grants I mentioned, IDEA and ESSA, we're budgeting $626,000. For the state non-public, we're budgeting $6,200 based on what we've received previously. So total anticipated for special revenue is $632,000. The local budget, I'm sorry, the local funds that I mentioned before, because we don't know that there certainly are coming in, while there is a great consistency each year, we don't have a budget number for those. I did want to mention that within the special revenue, although this is coming to an end as well, but I did want to highlight, this is the last year that we have some leftover federal funds that we receive for COVID relief. So we have, there were three different categories, the fourth on the bottom. The three main categories that we received COVID relief over the last several years. First was CARES. This was referred to as ESER 1. This was $171,000. Those funds were required to be spent and liquidated by September of 2022, which we did do, spent 100% of what we received. The CIRISA or ESER 2, $747,000. This had a deadline of September 2023 to spend and liquidate. Again, we were able to spend the full 100% of what we received. ART ESER or ESER 3, $1,842,000. This, we have a deadline of September 30th of 2024 to spend, so it was a little bit of carryover into next year. Two data, we spent approximately 88% of it. So we just have a small amount left to spend, but we are on track and working with, within the district to have those money spent and encumbered prior to the September 30th of 2024 deadline. And then the last is ART IDEA. As I mentioned before, IDEA funds we use to offset the cost of some special ed tuition. We received this during the course of the COVID relief period. That was additional $133,000, which we used for that purpose as well. That brings to the conclusion for tonight's presentation, however, as I mentioned, this is just the first of a couple of presentations for the 2024 budget. Just as a recap, after tonight's meeting and tonight's adoption of the preliminary budget, we're going to send the budget, in addition with all supported documentation, down to the county office. We have two more meetings where I'll be discussing various areas of the budget. And then our main first meeting is when we anticipate having a summary and final adoption of the budget for the '24-'25 school year. At any time between now and that final adoption, we certainly can make some modifications and adjustments if we need to. If so, we will go into detail with any of those changes that might be at the final budget, final budget hearing on May 1st. Any questions from members aboard? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Kyle. I did have one question. I'm just trying to understand with state funding and state aid and how, I mean, I'm assuming there's some sort of a formula that's very complicated perhaps, but I'm just, is there something in particular that raises ours 10%? I mean, is there, do you have some understanding or it seems?
Politics.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Yes, it's true that there are various different factors that play into it, such as whatever enrollment levels are, number of students who might qualify for free reduced lunch, which is a couple of variables that come into play. There is the safe funding formula, and it's been referenced in the news a little bit. It had been modified over the years, so there's a phase and process to bring everybody back up to some funding that, you know, some people might say they should be at. We're still currently going through that phase and process for our budget purposes. When we initially build the budget, we do budget thinking that the stay is going to be flat. So anything that does come in additional helps us close any gaps that we might have and is additional funding that we can utilize.
Great. Thank you so much. Sure, Mr. Kizmarsky would like to make a comment.
Not so much a question or a comment, but it's just well done for yourself and administration and the principals, administrators. We put this together over the past seven months. It's a lot of work, I know that goes into this, but to come in at 1.6% increase is very impressive. I will say that, you know, as a dodo tushay, the council came in at 1.3. So congratulations to the council, but the winners here, all three of the taxpayers of the township, with a $66 increase from the school board and a $44 increase from the township, assuming the county can try to stay flat for once. A $100 increase year over year on the average home in this town for what they get, the services we provide, the school district that we have is a testament to the people that put this all in. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Kizmarsky. Well said.
I'll just do my finance.
Board member remarks, Mr. Gallo?
I'll do my finance committee report now.
Okay, sure. All right, sure. Let's just skip right ahead. Finance and facilities.
Just to echo what Ben said, Kyle and the central office team did a very, scrutinized the budget and expenditures very, very closely. But if you're an astute listener to these budget presentations, over the past 10 years or so, the district has absorbed many new initiatives, things like full-day kindergarten, the one-to-one initiative, little sports, and I can go on, and supports, the steam building, the supports that we give our elementary teachers in terms of supervisory support and the coaches, and a whole series of initiatives. This year's budget was really more focused on funding what we currently do. Why are we not introducing a whole series of initiatives? Well, for the one, for one thing, all the things we have in play are working pretty well. But the more important thing, which is more long-term than what we're looking at here, is our resources are becoming more constrained. And in future presentations, Kyle is no doubt going to be mentioning things like the rising cost of transportation, the rising cost of our health benefits, and any number of areas in the budget that are growing at a rate faster than 2%. In negotiations, we've always talked to the people we negotiate with and we say, well, one day your raises and our ability to raise revenue will cross. We're getting very close to those days. One of the other things that I think we should be applauded for is there's always a temptation as you get closer to use one-time revenue sources or one-time cost reductions to fill the gap. The central office team and the committee were very much against any of these one-time types of maneuvers because what we're really, you know, we're looking beyond this year. We're looking downstream and what would the impact be on our taxpayers? We would be doing a disservice to our taxpayers if one year we think there was a very low increase followed by a very large increase in the future here. So that was another hallmark of the way that this budget was built. I get nervous because I was here during, I was sitting on board, but I was a citizen during the period of time when Ed Batula was the business administrator, and the state, in order to fill its budget problem, took back a tremendous amount of state aid. And when, so Kyle references this, you know, trying to get back to where we're supposed to be number, yeah, it's wonderful that we should send a thank you card to Trenton to give us some of our money back to help our school budget. But it does, it does concern me because the more we become reliant on that money, the less, in one way, we have a little less control and we have less certainty and confidence building programs going forward. So all these are, we have, as Ben mentioned, we ended up in a fantastic spot. And as the board has done for many years now, we've kept the tax increase below the 2% threshold that were allowed. But I do want to provide one small warning for the future that we need to be extra careful. And this, the team who put this budget together is aware of those risks, risks and pitfalls, and has done a bang-up job guiding us in a way that we have future success. And we continue to offer the educational, excellent educational opportunities that our community has become accustomed to. So I just wanted to wrap that part of that.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Appreciate it. Okay, Assistant Superintendent's report. Dr. Fair, do you have a report for us this evening?
I do. I'll start with the obvious. I know that I shared in my report at our last board meeting that we would provide a copy of Rachel Gilbert, a recent Mawa High School graduate, her children's book, Last in the Box, A Cran's Journey. So there's a copy for you. Mr. Gallo, he already turned to, you know, that first page where she does speak to my family and the wonderful staff of the Mawa School District. So congratulations again to Rachel. Second piece, another congratulations to Walker Larson. He is also a Mawa High School graduate, and he is one of our math teachers at Mawa High School. Walker Larson, he serves as Rampou College's pitching coach for their baseball team, and he was just recently honored into the Rampou College Athletics Hall of Fame. He's a 2015 graduate of Rampou College, and he helped guide the Roadrunners to three NCAA tournament appearances, including the Division III College World Series in 2015. So congratulations to Walker. I know Max had shared our GEMS evening. GEM stands for Girls Excelling in Math and Science. You'll see that there is a flyer at your places. All are invited. That will take place on Monday, March 25th, from 68 at the Think Tank. Over at JK, we had an American Heart Association fundraiser. Our JK Student Council and the HSO assisted in the JK School Community's efforts in fundraising for the American Heart Association. Ultimately, they donated collectively a very impressive and generous $6,380 in funds towards this very worthy cause. So I thought that was important to highlight. Also at your places is another flyer that showcases and advertises for a parent academy that will take place tomorrow evening via Zoom. The title of that parent academy is Supporting Each Child Emotionally Where They Are. And this session will be focused on providing our K through 12 families with strategies from some of our administrative team and some of our SCL coaches in the district that families can use to support their child when they are facing a range of challenges from dysregulation to stress, anxiousness, nervousness, and sadness. So an email reminder will be sent out to the community in the morning, and in that email, communication will also be a direct Zoom link to the evening's presentation. On the agenda, Lissa Jobfair, our central office team will be joining me this weekend where we will start recruiting, I can't believe we're saying this, for the '24-'25 school year for anticipated vacancies. So we're excited, but it's, we're here. We're here. So, which transitions nicely into the announcement of our retirements because ultimately we have to fill those vacancies this weekend. So agenda item 19B, we have Lorraine Piero, who serves as a non-instructional paraprofessional at Mawa High School, and she's worked here for the past 10 years. Many will know her as the greeter at the front desk of Mawa High School in the afternoon at the front door. Lorraine's three children are graduates of Mawa High School as well and are products of our school system. In her position, Lorraine has been responsible for helping to maintain the security of her building while welcoming guests to our high school. Lorraine interfaces with public, parents, staff, students, vendors, and township officials often, and in her interactions, she has consistently demonstrated herself to be professional, proactive, supportive, and loyal to our students and staff. Lorraine is always willing to go the extra mile to assist our students, parents, and staff, and we wish her nothing but happiness in the years ahead. So congratulations to Lorraine. Lastly, agenda item 19A announces the retirement of Linda Walter, who is a science teacher at Rampou Ridge Middle School. So in celebrating her incredible career, she has given 47 years of service to education. She's left an indelible mark on the hearts and minds of countless individuals, particularly during her remarkable 43 years of tenure here in Mawa. Mrs. Walter has devoted her time and energy to enhancing our school community through the organization of one of our tricky tray events, through her advisement to the National Junior Honor Society, and through her dedication to the arts and leading our string play for the past eight years, with her final performance taking place the week of March 22nd. So this is just a shameless plug to not only honor our students, but also to honor Mrs. Walter in the last showcase, so everyone can buy their tickets now. Mrs. Walter, we wish her the best as she embarks on this well-deserved journey into retirement with her beautiful granddaughter waiting for her. We send our heartfelt wishes, and if you know Mrs. Walter, she loves Disney World, so we hope she visits often. And it just so happens that the play is due in the east. So it's all very poetic. That's my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fair. All right, let's move on to President's Report. So I actually have a few things to share. You'd think we've covered it all, but there's so much, so much going on in this district at all times. Our top soaring Thunderbirds of February, we have Senior Abraham Kaladjin, who's an active member of the Art Club, and he's in the Visual and Integrated Design Pathway. And our staff member is our teacher of art, Mrs. Taryn Brown. So they're tops for recognition for our Thunderbirds. Congratulations to a senior Thunderbird, Jacqueline Carley, for being recognized by the New Jersey School Boards Association as a 2024 Burton County Unsung Hero. And that was, it was a recognition on March 5th, and this is basically for the various districts and representatives from those districts. So congratulations to her. That's a real honor for us. Our DECA, they had their competition, their state competition, and Izzy Molino shines bright, winning two awards in the area of marketing. So congratulations to Izzy. From the music department, we have quite a few things. The T-Birds performed their show Let Music Play at the 2024 Mid-Atlantic Indoor Winter Guard Show at South Brunswick High School. Our percussion group, the Indoor Percussion, performed Cosmos at the JFK High School and placed second at the U.S. Tournament of Bands Competition. And then we had our Mawa High School senior tuba player, Ali Amair, who performs with, he performed with the New Jersey All-State Symphony Band in Atlantic City. So congratulations to all of them. We also have had several North Jersey Students of the Week. We had, yes?
Keep voting.
Keep voting. Keep voting, everyone. Callie Nichols, who's a senior, and Nerisma Osgensel, I hope I pronounced that correctly, also a senior. And then we had, congrats to Anya Patel and Albert Wen, who competed at the Harvard Debate Tournament in February, and they made it to the top 16. Also, Anya received a speaker award, I thought this was very impressive, for being six out of 500-plus high school students in their division. So a real tremendous achievement for our debaters and for Mawa, obviously. And lastly, this one I thought was very interesting, and Dr. Dittore did not mention it, so I'm going to mention in the sports area. Senior captain in ice hockey, Leanna Cole, I think I'm saying that correctly, on her milestone of 1,000 saves, she earns a thousand... She earns 1,000, I thought this was the best, 1,000 career saves cementing her in the New Jersey Boys, why is it just Boys varsity goalie history? But again, kudos to a woman pushing forward in a man's world. Just saying. All right, that was my report. Just saying. Congratulations to everyone. All right, Board Committee reports. What do we have this evening? Mr. Gallo has already given us finance facilities.
I cherish that.
Oh, yeah. Why do you say that, Mr. Gallo? Would you like to kick us off?
Yes, I have a very, very important conversation. We met two times now with each of our associations that represent our administrators and supervisors. We've continued up positive dialogue. We have follow-up meetings set up with both, and we look forward to bringing the contracts to conclusion in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you very much. Ms. Abanero?
Just a quick reminder that our first T-Bird Talk Roundtable is on Tuesday, 6:30 at Rampe Ridge Middle School in the library. RSCPs are still open, so please use the link that came out in the email. I've posted it all over social media, you definitely can't miss it. Just a quick reminder, it's just a nice informal roundtable gathering where we can invite the community in and have conversations about whatever is on their mind. We all know that it can be intimidating to come to a board meeting, and then you stand up there, and all of us are just staring at people as they're talking. So it's just nice to be able, and you know, Dr. Dittoro really mentioned earlier, and I kind of want to follow up on what he was talking about, community connections, being available to the community, I think it's all really important. We talk about it in strategic planning, in district goals, in board goals. And I think we do a really great job of it. And this is just kind of another layer of, just another event that we can do when we're talking about connecting with the community. We talk a lot about how we have a very large population in town, but a relatively small school community in comparison. This is a great opportunity, if you don't have students in the district, to be able to come and find out what we're doing. There is a lot of things that we should be very proud of, and there's a lot of great things that we're doing, and we happily open the doors. So I would be in attendance on Tuesday. I'm looking forward to, I think we had about 30 RCPs so far. Looking forward to those 29 other community members coming out to say hello and just say what's on their mind, and have a really cool, you know, intimate setting conversation. Also to follow up on what Dr. Dittoro was speaking about earlier, voting on Lauren Bishop's contract today, just from a community relations standpoint, we are very excited about this. I think that as a district, we are doing really amazing things. And we talk about branding and having a brand. This is just one further step of getting that credit also for what we are doing here. Having a person be able to come in and say, this is just how to do what you're already doing and do it a little bit better, I think is a really great thing. Being able to connect with the community, both the school community and non-school community, I think there's a lot of opportunity there. So I am speaking on behalf of my community. Very excited for this, very much looking forward to it. Really happy that we're able to have this to vote on today. Really appreciate the work that Dr. Dittoro and Dr. Fair have done to kind of bring this rounded out. We've been talking about it for a while. Wanted to make sure that we were doing it right, with the right people, the right, you know, the right impact behind it. So just wanted to say thank you. And I think that this is just really great, just from our standpoint.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Abanero. Any other Board Committee reports? Okay, quickly, from instruction and curriculum. At our February meeting, we just reviewed some of the touchpoints. We had a presentation from Mr. Gliaata and Mr. Pascal from the Guidance Department, and also our Career Pathways Program. So they provided an overview and several handouts of the career pathways, and also how we're working on the communication and transition, particularly from Rampoe Ridge to Mawa High School. The other thing we also talked about was, I'm Dr. Ravino, presented to us about the growth data from our universal screeners. That's iReady, which is what is used K through 8, and Linkit, which is used at Mawa High School. So very good information and information that teachers can use and implement, and can see the growth that students are making on some of these testings that we do. Did you want to jump in? Yes.
I saw a little more information specific to iReady. I know we've talked about it many times. And Dr. Ravino was able to give a very comprehensive overview to the instructional committee. I wanted to talk to the board as a whole, specific to this work. What I can tell you, Central Office has been fortunate enough to be in and partake in the data meetings at the different schools. And I know, when you say data, different people have different feelings when you say data. Some people feel it's more cold and removed, but what I can tell you, it's the complete opposite. As a teacher and administrator, Director of Curriculum, and now in my seat now, I have to tell you, I was truly inspired being in those meetings because of the awareness of who we're working with and the ability levels that we are obligated to address. And most importantly, I'm very grateful to the administrators and the teachers who are running that meeting. The reason why I say that is, when you sit down and you sit, when you sit in those meetings and you listen, you're able to appreciate the ability of those teachers to look at that information and really create a very specific and intentional plan for our students. When you see, and we talk about the students who either struggle, who are on grade level, or our students who are above grade level, there's purpose behind the plan, and there's meaningful goals and checking points to say, are we doing right by our students? It was a great opportunity now, at the mid-year point, to see, we've decided to take on iReady. We've put an amount of money into this program, and Linkit, and it's a K-12 initiative. It's really important for us to see, is it working? Now, I want to be very clear with you, because there was some conversations about it. The growth is not just because of iReady. The teachers are working extremely hard, and the teacher is making a big impact. But iReady is also helping them identify very specific things to work on. And I really am grateful for the dedication of the teachers and commitment of the teachers and administrators to make sure that the program is being maximized in the district. So I'm encouraged, I'm very proud, and I'm very grateful for the work that's being put into this. Again, we talk all the time, whether it's the state reports, or as I said, which is more important, the everyday data that we're getting. Growth is happening, there's pride there, and hopefully, this continues year over year over year.
Thank you, Dr. Dittoro. And yes, I would say the tool in and of itself is never as, you know, useful and productive as those administering the tools. So it's a good combination to provide more specific, targeted information on students, their learning, and their growth. So thank you for clarification, Dr. Dittoro. I also just wanted to, as a board, I know that there are times that, you know, we've spoken about having, you know, some full-board conversations. I'd just like to give an opportunity on 18H regarding the Communications Consultant at Laura Bishop, who we've all, as a board, met with in different meetings through our different committees and, you know, other individual board members as well. So I just wanted to open the forum if there was any further conversation. We want to kind of give our perspectives just to have some conversation about it before we vote. Mr. Kizmarsky, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I was going to jump in anyways. Krista did speak for her community, but sometimes the community has to.
I guess this can be board member remarks.
Speaking is supportive of the resolution, but, you know, going back to, I'd say prior to Dr. Dittoro's arrival, but definitely during his interview process, you heard from board members about our concerns about the communications strategy of the district. And it was buried, it was all over the place, and it was, you know, there were inconsistencies internally, trying to reach out to the broader community. And, you know, there were some different phrases that describe it, but I think using one of yours was an area of opportunity would be the best way to put it. And in this, several years you've been here, you've gone leaps and bounds. I mean, it really has gotten to a point where things are going out, people are knowing what's going on. But we certainly still have room for improvement. And not entirely, just to Krista's point, the school community is several thousand kids, and so on top of that, several thousand parents and guardians. This is a town of 26,000 people, 25 and a half has the last sentence. It's a big community, and it's varied in socioeconomic, to where they live, and, you know, you name it. So in just trying to find the different channels to reach that, to talk about all the great things we're doing, to make people feel really foolish for wanting to leave this school district and lose pride in school, for various reasons. But no, I think she's going to provide us with a lot of help in terms of just different things we can do, different things we can do better, and I look forward to working on it for stuff. It's a great thing.
Thank you, Mr. Kizmarsky. Thank you, Mr. Kizmarsky. Mr. Hughes?
So 100%, I think we're doing a great job with communication. But with that being said, after reviewing the services that Lauren Bishop provides, I feel like we're doing a lot of great things already, and we can compound that, but also use resources at the district level and do a lot more in-house rather than use Lauren Bishop. So for example, if one of the services that she wanted to provide is video, we have a tremendous class, digital media here at Mawa High School. We can utilize digital media to produce various videos and say, hey, and we could point to those students and be like, hey, check out this awesome video. Like, what if digital media did something on some of these sports awards? And we just interviewed some of these kids on the sports awards, and we could just point to the Mawa student to say, hey, a Mawa student videotaped this individual. So in my opinion, I feel we already are doing a tremendous, oh, the website. The website looks great. I was just looking at the website yesterday. There's already awards listed on the website. So I think we're doing a great job communicating. I think we can definitely compound the great work that we're doing with communication and not necessarily do that with their help. I think we're doing a fabulous job, and we can do everything in-house. And the last question I had was the cost. So I understand that we're going off a $35,000 price tag. But after also looking at some of the other details under budget and fee structure with the Lauren Bishop LLC, it also says that fees do not include professional videography, professional photography, printing, or mailing costs, translation services, or other pre-approved out-of-pocket expenses. I don't know if we can speak to that now, since it hasn't been approved. But is there any, is there like a price tag, or do we have another estimate of how much more that would be?
And I'm sure Dr. Dittoro can probably get back to you on that, or do you have some? Okay.
Along the lines, I'm completely agreeing with you, along the lines of making sure that our students are engaged in production. What I can tell you, and I'm very proud to tell you, is our students are already doing those types of things, along the lines of engaging and taking those opportunities to create videos. So our students already have that experience, and they have a large number of things that we have created. I know that there was some videos that were sent out over the past couple of weeks from the high school. They are involved in doing that. The struggle is, you start to wear them thin because they're not here to just do those videos. They're here, they're doing their coursework, they're involved in extracurricular activities. So what I can tell you is, we are finding, let's take Laura Bishop out of the conversation. We are finding additional opportunities for them to create those videos. Those videos, it's a small part of this experience. So what I want to tell you is, engaging with an organization like this, videos are a piece. Utilizing them allows us to do other types of videos. That's number one. Number two, at no point did I expect them to take on the cost of mailers or materials or translating. What I can tell you, which I'm very happy about, we already have a program here that translates. So that's not an additional cost. The mailers, and hopefully, everyone's aware of this, anything that does get sent out to the school community, we take on that cost. So I would never expect an outside agency to take on that cost for any new products that are happening. What's going to happen within our meetings that we had, and I'm so glad that she met with every single one of you, and also with the materials that I sent to you guys, is there's a number of things. The complexities of the materials are valued, which I appreciate, but also the approach, the understanding of them coming in and not only working with us, but training our staff to understand what we need to do. Let's just talk about social media. Unfortunately, social media is a huge tool to get information out. Training our staff on how we can create content to get out to our community that people are going to look at, that's number one. Number two is identifying different opportunities for us to engage outside news organizations, crafting that kind of content, so we can celebrate the things that are happening, and more importantly, get our information out to our community immediately. There's another piece of it. So I don't want to go chat conversant all the different opportunities, but I do hear what you're saying along the lines of never forgetting that there are opportunities here in district and making sure that we're leaning on our students. We're doing that along the lines of, and it's actually perfect timing. We were talking about creating content for our sports organizations and actually parlaying that into internship and externships for our students. So I don't think it's necessarily one or the other. I think it's important to make sure that that's our primary focus, is are we maximizing our students? But I don't want it to be at the cost of taking them away from their studies too, because that's their major priority. But just realize that when we take on organizations like this, we're always looking at, are there things that we can do internally? And then we're also looking at, when we're talking about opportunities, are there opportunities for us to build our capacity of communicating at a high level? Because that's what the community deserves, and I think that's why we engage this organization.
Thank you, Ms. Jansen.
Yeah, I just wanted to share, I just came from an external event where I had to hire many vendors to support the success of it. And I had 150 people in the room. And when I look at all the vendors and I think about Laura's presentation, she has the expertise. We need to bring this up to that next level, to advise us so that the volunteers can continue to spend their time and spending in a very productive way while they're learning. And I think that's what the beauty of this is, that she's done this. She has an outside perspective that will bring us up on the tech piece templates that will last past our engagement with her. So when I think of this, I think of her giving us the piece of development and giving us that expertise to just really enhance what we're currently doing. Because we know there's a gap, to Ben's point. So while I understand there's challenges, but really understanding what's behind this, I think everyone's been very thoughtful with all the details and every piece that she's going to bring us. And she's done this for other school districts, and I was very impressed with her, having looked at vendors in my outside life and seen what they can bring. And I think this is a really positive item for us.
Thank you, Ms. Jansen. Mr. Gallo?
I fully endorse ETH and will vote yes on it. I think one of the things we should step back from is, what is the purpose of communication? So for many, we've made a lot of strides, as Ben has said, to improve the way that we reach out to our community. And one of the communities that we have also reached out to in a more focused and intentional way is our business community, our volunteer organizations. As part of our pathways, internship and externship and Thunderbird partnership. I mean, it's, the inventory of things we do is amazing. But bringing in a, one of the values of bringing in an organization like Laura Bishop's is that they will provide us not only expertise from experience, but they'll also give us feedback on what we're currently doing. Because we know that there are businesses we're not currently reaching that are here in Mawa and in the surrounding communities. What other ways can we communicate to get the word out so that they'd be enthusiastic to come to us? We're not necessarily hunting them, Ben, they're hunting us now, and change the balance of the equation. So I think that outside perspective is going to be very helpful to strengthening our overall communication strategy. The other thing, and Krista alluded to it, is, and Ben alluded to it as well, we have a gigantic community that does not have a daily contact. a gigantic community that does not have a daily contact with our schools. And what's the purpose of communicating with those folks? Well, first of all, they pay a lot of our budget. 60% or 65% of their taxes go to supporting a school district. And based on all of the achievements and successes of our programs, they should rightly, when they send their checks in, they should go, I am very proud to be able to have, to put my name on that check to the school district, because I know the product they're putting out is excellent. So I think that's a community, and I know the township has struggled reaching out to those folks as well, through various social media, automated message systems, and I think that's a community, as Krista said and Ben said, is underserved by our current communications platform. And Laura will help us by doing the audit of inventory of what our communication strategies are, is how we can reach those folks in our town, who are so important ultimately to the success of our school. I mean, Kyle brought it up, and special revenue, it's outside local funds. Think of all the resources we get from Mawa Schools Foundation, Mawa Municipal, the MMA, and all those helps that help our students. We have a tremendously diverse and generous community who have only one interest, the success of our students. And the better we can connect with them through various communication strategies, the more successful we'll be. So there's a thousand reasons to do the Lauren Bishop contract, and I think, and just through my little lens, those are some of the things that I would focus on. Yes, we have the digital media folks, and they can certainly assist, and they might even be part of some of the auditing, and maybe they'll talk to her, or maybe she'll interview them, and some of her knowledge will transfer to them. I mean, again, the education experience is always sort of a two-way street, you know? Us reaching out, but we also want folks to reach in and give us a hand.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Mr. Copeland?
I'm not going to beat the dead horse. We've all kind of covered a lot here, but the one thing I want to point out...
Point counterpoint.
The point I want to point out was just the importance of communication these days. We see it, Dr. Dittoro mentioned social media, it's all over the place. And one of the things that, from the HSO standpoint we brought up, and as well as from the board, is consistency. One of the things that I'm really looking forward to with this consultant coming in is providing some kind of consistency throughout the district. So as our families move through the district, going from K to 12, there is a consistency in messaging. We talk about brand, we talk about building out the brand, and part of that brand message is consistency in what we're saying and how we're saying it. Over the years, Dr. Dittoro's been great with feedback and has been able to kind of change the way communications go out from the individual schools, so that there's a little more consistency, and there's a little bit more brevity in certain situations as well. And I think bringing in this consultant, having her and her team look at what we're doing and how we're doing it throughout K through 12, saying, hey, let's do it this way, giving our staff the tools that they need, because let's be honest, our staff are not communication experts. They're here to educate and care for our children. That's what they're experts in. So for us to expect them to know what the newest and greatest communication tool is unfair. We don't expect them to know how to change a light bulb, or how to run wireless access point. We have tech people, and we have facilities people that do that. This is no different than that. So I'm looking forward to seeing what this brings, and I've been a big proponent of this for a very long time, so thank you for finally putting this on the agenda and making this happen.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Any other comments? I just want to say two things. One of the things is how we came to Laura Bishop Communications, I think is important to note, because several of us have heard her speak at the New Jersey School Boards Association. This particular, past October, she had a presentation, and I think she has done this for several other districts in New Jersey, and she's been very successful in that. So I think, you know, one understanding of this is how we, we've been talking about this. Really, a lot of this came, I'd say even out of the pandemic. I mean, there have been times where our world has changed, it's evolved, and a reliable and consistent approach to communication is critical in what we do and how we do it. But I just wanted to highlight that that was something that several of us had heard her, Dr. Dittoro, Dr. Farrick followed up on that. And so again, there's, you know, what we do, sometimes it looks like we just vote and it comes up. It's been a very step, you know, and stepwise and guided process. And again, I think we would love, we love that our administrative team is so good at communications and social media and all that, but we'd love to have a professional to help our team so that they can focus on educating and educating our students, and we have someone else who can assist them with some other pieces of the puzzle. So again, I welcome what she's going to do. She's going to work with us if this gets voted on through the end of this school year and then in preparation for the next school year. So this will be an annual contract beginning on April 1st for her, for one year. Okay? All right, if we have nothing else, then let's move on to old business. We have 17A. Mr. Bleecker, roll call please. The minutes from, oh, I need a motion, sorry, from January 24th. This was from the January 4th meeting.
February 15th.
Oh, and we have February 15th. Got it. Okay, so those two meetings. Motion, Mr. Hughes, seconded by Mr. Gallo.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski?
Yes.
Ms. Jansen?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Ms. Devenero?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
I abstain on 17A and yes to 17B. All right, let's take our new business, A to N. Need a motion on the floor, Mr. Kismarski, seconded by Mr. Gallo. Okay, roll call please, Mr. Bleecker.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, except on 18A, I am standing through check number 114761 and 114818.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes, but no on H.
Mr. Kismarski?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes, and thank you to Mr. Bleecker and the entire business office staff for putting the budget together. It's not an easy task, so thank you.
Ms. Devenero?
Yes.
And Ms. Jansen?
Yes.
And Dr. Morthe?
Yes. All right, let's now take 19, new business, I'd like to take the retirements separately. 19A and B, I need a motion on the floor, Mr. Hughes, and seconded by Mr. Kismarski on our two retirements for this evening. Mr. Bleecker?
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Just a note on Linda Walters' retirement, I had the opportunity to go back to do, back to school night last fall, and I went into her class, and I thought, oh my God, I would love to go back to middle school science. She is a dynamo. She remembered that she had my kids, I, of course, this was 20 years ago that she had them, but she still remembered that they were in her class. She is an educator that loves the profession of educating, but for the purpose of advancing students one at a time. Her presentation to the parents was wide-ranging, broad, dynamic, I mean, she got you. And it's a real loss to the district to lose her, but a big gain, I'm sure, for her family and for her, I mean, it says 42 years of experience. Should we add another year? 42, 43 years of experience. It's a tremendous record, tremendous contribution to our students and our community, and I wish her nothing but the best at Disney World. So I vote yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes, and shout out to Ms. Piro. You can always count on her for a smile in the morning, coming into school.
Thank you. Mr. Kismarski?
Yes.
Ms. Jansen?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Ms. Devenero?
Yes.
And Dr. Morthe?
Yes, and wishing them both very well in their retirement, and both my children to have Ms. Walters as well. And she's really, I think, one of the things that strikes you, she's very down-to-earth, very matter-of-fact, but connects with our children. And I mean, 42 years is a tremendous amount, so we thank her for her dedication, and to both of them, good luck in retirement. All right, let's now take 19, C through O, I have C through O. Mr. Kismarski, seconded by Mr. Copeland. Mr. Bleecker?
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski?
Yes.
Ms. Jansen?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Ms. Devenero?
Yes.
And Dr. Morthe?
Yes. All right, public questions or comments. Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with law 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. It's a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. All right, I need a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. Gallo, seconded by Mr. Copeland. Okay, we are officially open to public.
Hello, everyone. I'm Allison Kuci. I live at 28 Divine Drive. I'm actually here tonight. I haven't been to a board meeting in quite a while, but I'm actually here to say thank you. I'm here to say thank you because my kids were little when we were contemplating money, was the extra money, the surplus money going to sports fields, and I mean, that's years and years and years ago. And I had little kids at the time, like, that's going to be great, my kids are into sports. But then when you changed and went to the idea of the think tank, my kids were still little, but I'm here to say thank you times 100 for not only coming up and realizing that was the future of what Mawa needed, but as a parent of a student who's currently, I mean, the best part of his day is in that think tank. The amount of money you spend on the wood shop equipment alone is phenomenal, and that is what's making my child go off to want to be an engineer. You know, it started as a little kid with Legos and things, but through Mr. Co. and most importantly, Mr. Catizone, he has just cultivated a lifelong woodworker, mechanic, everything possible. So I'm really here to say thank you for spending the money on those kinds of things. Please continue to spend money on those kinds of things, because they're our kids, it's the best part of their day. I mean, he loves it so much, he's now doing independent study with, and helping Mr. Catizone in the, I guess, introduction to wood shop as one of his, you know, last parts. So it really, really makes a difference. So thank you for investing in that years ago, thank you for investing in it now, and I just hope that you continue to do that for future students of Mawa as well.
Thank you.
Wow, thank you very much for that. Yeah, that was...
I'll be back next week.
I'm going to wait two hours. Sorry.
But thank you, Ms. Kuci.
It was so worth it, though.
And, you know, that's what's very heartwarming to hear, when our programming and the things that we're putting in place are directly affecting students, and from what you're saying, your son is excited to come to school. That's really tremendous, and that's really what it's all about. So thank you very much for that feedback. We really do greatly appreciate it. And don't worry, we will continue to focus on those things in this district, continue to move the marker ahead. Thank you. All right, seeing no one else coming forward at this time, I need a motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Copeland, seconded by Ms. Jansen. All right, I think we do not need an executive session at the end, so motion to adjourn. Mr. Hughes, and seconded by Mr. Gallo, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. Appreciate it.